I call a meeting to order. Call roll.
Ms. Cowlens?
Here.
Mr. Reno? Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Ms. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
A form has been established. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are citizens comments. This is a portion of the meeting where you, the residents of the city of Mount Clemens, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address. I'll be mindful that you have three minutes to avoid your inquiries. Also, you may not receive a response to your particular inquiry here this evening. And last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens comments.
Hi, my name is Christine Brown and I live at 170 Bain in Mount Clemens, Michigan. My address is concerning that night, what had happened that night. I talked to Ms. Beals. And my purpose is to say, what are we gonna do about it? I know we have said about what he has done. The point is, the bug stops here. And someone has to do something to pay for this. Because this is unacceptable. This is unacceptable with our kids. And then what Ms. Monique Mills was telling me, you guys didn't vet him until after he had that event. And she told me, then they found out, he never had those license to run a charity event. So all I'm saying is like this, someone dropped the ball here. And that's where we gotta get right here. Because our kids are very, we're disappointing our kids. And we got a dark stain on this already of trying to bring this up to the level to where it's supposed to be. When I went to school. And so I have to come here to explain to my kids because what's gonna happen is, your enrollment is down low. And it's gonna, if we don't do something, it's gonna be down to zero. No one's gonna wanna send their kids here. So this must be done, and someone has to lose their job over this. Because this is not, this is not acceptable. This is not acceptable. We can't just keep blaming him. Because he, y'all let him do this. So whoever signed off for him to be here, and where was security? No security. That could've been a fight, it could've been guns drawn, and nothing wouldn't have been done. And then we could've looking at a murder charge, we could've been looking like Columbine, we could've been looking at all different kinda stuff. Thank God it didn't happen, but it could've happened. So I'm saying, you guys figure it out, where the ball dropped, and someone has to lose their job. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Floor is still open for citizens comments.
Mr. Rickman, Dr. Rickman. Earl Robinson, post commander for 1794 Mount Clemens for the Veterans of Foreign Wars. We recognize fallen veterans and also combat veterans here in the area. My responsibility as commander is to give announcements to our community on certain awards and also opportunities for our youth to participate with the Veterans of Foreign Wars. My address is 1035 Roslin, Mount Clemens, and I've lived here 26 years. There are three awards sponsored by the Veterans of Foreign Wars. And we would love for the Mount Clemens School District to participate in this opportunity. The scholarships themselves for students can range from $30,000 to $50,000. And also, we have all grades that can participate in these types of awards. Number one, the Patriot Pin. The Patriot Pin is a program that is sponsored for our youth in the first through fifth grade. And you can also go online for each of these awards to submit to our post. In order for the awards to be validated, to be placed in for national competition for the $30,000 and $50,000 for all of your students, it has to come to our post. I would like them to send it to me personally, and I will make sure that we submit any submission from the school to the district so they can be recognized nationally for competition. And I will give my information to your administrators so they know where exactly to send things. But anyone in our community can go to the Veterans of Foreign Wars website for the Patriot Pin. And you go to vfwmi.org/di/vfw/v2/de. Patriot Pin. This year's essay for the Patriot Pin is for my pledge to our veterans. And the children can actually write the essay, a 200 to 300-word essay for that. The next award is for the youth scholarship, and it's called the Voice of Democracy. The Voice of Democracy provide for college scholarships ranging from $35,000 to $50,000 for eligible student from ninth grade to 12th grade. And annually, the VFW contributes $2 million to this educational pursuit. The website for the Voice of Democracy is vfw.org/community/you. This year's theme is, let's see here, why is the veteran important? In this particular competition, it is a video/essay presentation for a student from ninth grade to 12th. And all the rules are on the website, and all the details are there. Finally, we'd like to recognize our educators. As the VFW, we always respect our educators. So we do have a Teacher of the Year recognition program. And here, whoever you select as a nominee, we would like to receive your nomination of that person, or persons. And so our post is 1794 Mount Clemens, Michigan. I am the commander for the post. We represent 15,000 veterans in our area. And also, I'm a member of the district, and we represent 230,000 veterans that are either retired, elderly, or in the hospital throughout Michigan. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, sir. We'll be definitely... Agenda's still open for citizens comments.
Hello, I'd like to express my...
Excuse me, sir. Your name and address, please.
Sorry, Matt Pitters. I'm a graduate from Mount Clemens High School and current resident at 96 South Wilson.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd like to express my dissatisfaction with the explanations given by school leadership regarding the events that happened on October 15th. The explanations given indicate a shirking of responsibility for the events that happened. And your responsibility as custodians for taxpayer dollars and the resources that we have here in the school and in the district. And I encourage the board and other school leaders to take ownership of your responsibility in the failure to prevent this event from happening and to stop this event from continuing as it was progressing that evening. And to show yourself as an example for our students and our young people so that when they make mistakes, that they would feel the need to take ownership of what they've done and make it right. Right now, we're showing them an example of pushing the blame to someone else. Pushing the blame to someone else when it was your responsibilities to make sure that something like this didn't happen. I would also like to understand in detail and have it be available to the public what the organizers of that event and the attendees of that event had access to that night. What areas of the building? Were they able to get into classrooms? Were they able to get into offices? Were they able to access information that is, you know, student information? Were they able to leave things behind in the building for students to find? All of these are questions that I have since there was an unsupervised group who was obviously doing inappropriate things in our school. So I want to know, and I don't know if you'll answer me now, but I would like you to publish a date in which a report will be available public so that we can scrutinize what happened, what actions have been taken, and what changes are being made to make sure this never happens again. That's all I have.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Second call, citizens comments.
My apologies in advance. Thomas Barnes, 291 Jones Street. You have failed us. Time and time again, this board has made excuse after excuse of your constant failure. First time I was invited into this room, I sat here for three hours watching the former principal beg for his job because he wanted to help turn this district around. I sat in this room while 70% of your then-student body begged this board to make a decision to save their principal. I also had the pleasure of standing outside on Cass Avenue with over 400 students that protested this board's decision to fire the then-principal. Since then, you have changed the majority of your administrative staff. You have had an immense amount of teacher rollover. And since COVID, you've lost over 300 students in this district. Then this. Did anybody forget about homecoming last year? Your failure to get referees? The gun threats in the school? Or the countless young men that you've expelled from this institution? You are a failure to our tax dollars and to your responsibility for your board member seats. It is decision time, board. You are gonna have to decide what is best for the children in the city of Mount Clemens. Most of us have already seen your failures and chosen to take our children away from this district. At what point do you stop victimizing our most vulnerable population? The children that are entrusting you with their educational well-being are children that cannot leave this district, and you know that. It is disrespectful to us. We live in these communities. Last board meeting I was in, you talked about closing Martin Luther King Elementary. Yet again, over 90% of your student base is African-American. You're closing down Martin Luther King Elementary School, which is insane to me. Even more insane, when I was greeted to meet your wonderful new principal at Seminole, I was also shown the Behavioral Intervention Room, which now resides in your art room. You have failed to provide an art teacher for our K-5 program. You are failing us. This board passes through more money than the City Commission does. You service less than 900 residents of Mount Clemens. You have 50% more in your annual operating budget than our City Commission does. And no one has called you on your failures. It is time to own up and admit what you have done here. This is not about Saturday's event. There are multiple times this board is failing our kids. Less than 50 students a year graduating from this institution. Over $19 million. Over $7 million in S R 2 funds. Nothing. We deserve better, y'all.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I saw two or three people stand up. You don't have to sit down and wait. You can, you know, I have to keep announcing every time.
Good evening, school board. My name is Kevin Husstick, 60 Smith Street, Mount Clemens. I'm sure you know what I'm here to speak about because I emailed each of you individually. And I wanted to first speak about being a long-term person. I attended this school district, K-12. I am a proud Mount Clemens Community School alumni, a proud bather. And what I saw happen and get plastered all over the news is absolutely deplorable. Now, I am not going to share what I was provided in the FOIA request, but it makes my hair stand up on the back of my neck. There are individuals that are currently employed through this school board that should not have their jobs. I ask each of you that have been elected by these individuals that live in this city to do a thorough job, find who is responsible, and either call for their resignation, or you act in your capacity as school board members. This is absolutely embarrassing. As a former graduate, and I am still a proud bather, I cannot imagine what the students in your charge feel right now. Because they are not responsible for the acts that happened in this school district under the supervision of employees that have been hired by the superintendent that are in your charge. Now, I do plan on coming to a future meeting once there has been enough time for the investigation, whatever investigation you guys are doing, whatever investigation the Macomb County Sheriff's doing, that I will then read out some information that I find concerning, but I don't want to impede or cause any issues with investigations. So I'm gonna keep that information to myself. Anyone in this room can obviously send a FOIA request and ask for the FOIA response sent to Kevin Husstick on today's date and get a copy of the packet that I have. And that is all. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Good evening, Sheila Kahoot, 23067 Remick in Clinton Township. I am a taxpayer for the Mount Clemens School District. And, well, I'm very sad to see what continues to happen to these school districts time and time again. And I have to say, I think you guys know that this is pretty much rock bottom. There's no other direction but up from here. Okay? November's coming, there's elections happening, and I'm sure that there're gonna be changes to the school board because we can't have continual failures on every part. And I don't blame you individually, but as a collective. I'm sure you all are wonderful people, good law-abiding citizens. Unfortunately, the failures keep happening. And as a taxpayer, I wanna send my son to this school district. I can't. In all good consciousness, I cannot send my son here in any way, shape, or form. And there are many families that I know that feel the same because they all went to Lance Cruz, just like I did. We want this district to be successful. We do. We wouldn't be paying our taxes if we didn't. We know that you guys can do better. The kids need better. The kid needs, the kids need academics in their lives. They don't need to worry about what was happening this past weekend. And I'm gonna say one last thing. If a person that took part in this, or that wanted to take part in this, or the person that spearheaded this event had the lack of respect for this school, okay? Which is what I saw. He had lack of respect for this school, which is what is being produced right now from this school. Means we need to change what gets produced from this school district. We need children that go out into the world, that are productive parts of society, who want to have jobs, careers, skills that will take them long and far, and have respect for every human being. Woman, man, child. And that's what we need from this school board. And in November, that will change. And there'll be great people on this school board that will then take this school district to another level. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello. Antonette Wallace, 124 Bellevue, Mount Clemens. I was not going to say anything, but here I am. First of all, I wanna start out with something positive. I just wanna commend our new principal, Assistant Superintendent and Counselor for an amazing, amazing job they have been doing for our kids. My daughter has been here two years. She transferred from Chippewa, which she was excelling at Chippewa and is doing a phenomenal job here at Mount Clemens. So everyone is talking about what happened this past weekend, and I am in agreeance with majority of the things that were said. There is room for improvement, of course. And like the person before me said, we can only go up from here, and that's what is expected. I think for everyone that has been elected, there is an expectation. And especially when our kids are involved, there is more of an expectation. And I am here, many of you may be, may have been here prior. I don't know, but I am here to partner with this school, to see improvement, to be a part of the improvement. And I hope that many people that are here today will join me in doing that. Because we want better. We have to pay our taxes. So they're going here, so why not be a part of the better that's to come? So I just, of course, am disappointed. I am a county commissioner, I am a track coach with my husband. And I just wanna say that I have been here for our kids for track, and I have been followed and felt very disrespected when I had the right to be here. So my question for this past weekend, they should've been followed just like I was. They should've been, there should've been someone here to see what was going on, just like when I'm outside in track and people are asking me, what am I doing? And I'm a track coach, so I mean, it's pretty much one plus one equals two, but that's another subject. And there have been residents that have called and said that they have tried to rent out the facility and were denied because there wasn't enough staff. So it also brings the question, why was this even approved if our own residents that pay taxes have been not approved because there's not enough people here to get the job done? So again, I'm here to partner with the school, and I hope that those that are here today will join with me in partnering with Mount Clemens School District to be better than what we have seen in the past. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name's Jennifer Shepherd. I live at 34 Scott Boulevard, Mount Clemens, Michigan. I have been an employee here for four years in the main office. I wasn't going to say anything, but I think it does need to be said. For multiple times now, I have asked about Chromebooks. We have multiple children that do not have them still. When I've asked about what are we gonna do about getting them, my response from the principal is, "Okay," or "Oh, well." I don't know where to go with this. I don't know if they can be ordered. As a secretary, I don't know where I'm able to go with that. There are some students that have not returned there, so therefore, we're not reissued one, but there are some that we just ran out. I don't know if we can order more, but something needs to be done. I've had teachers email me saying I have students that don't have them. I need help with getting more. But thank you. Just wanna let you guys know.
Thank you for your comments. Last call, citizens comments.
Hi, I'm Kendra Antonades, 81 grand. I'm Kendra Antonades, 81 grand. I wasn't going to speak today because I'm not a very good speaker. But I'm totally repelled about what happened Saturday night. I just live right here, and I thought a football game was going on. And no, it was this show. And Ms. Beals, did I speak to you yesterday? I spoke to a superintendent yesterday.
It must've been me.
So, and yeah, and said, "Look forward to seeing me tonight." Now, as I go back to looking and doing my little research myself, I see some discrepancies in what's been said in newsletters, these flyers, stating that nobody was aware this event was gonna take place in the gymnasium, which, that was contradicted, and I have it in my phone right here on a newsletter that was you signed on a superintendent paper in the first paragraph. I wanna know, as a taxpayer, being a resident here of almost 11 years, I sent two of my children here, Mr. Monk knows. That didn't work out very well, as you know, with my daughter, who's very quiet. That's a whole nother situation. A lot of things have been covered up many years here. Not been happy. I have had to remove my, two of my four children out of this district. The other two were older and already had graduated. But I did give you all a chance, after all the negative things I heard. Okay, I still brought my children here. My daughter was jumped. Tapes were deleted and misconstrued with. The way my son was talked to and threatened with the staff. You know, I had no choice but to remove him. He needed help. I had a script for an IEP. It was never taken care of since second grade. And I brought it even to your high school, to the principals, to the secretaries, to everybody. Nobody took initiative, okay? All the monies that we are paying in taxpayers' dollars, I would like to see a breakdown of what is being spent accordingly to this school. The pool has been closed since my kid, my kid was missing one day. That's why I yanked him out of this school too, because he was wandering around when the pool area was open and there was no water. It's not been functionable, okay? He was looking for some hot Cheetos in a vending machine. I wasn't notified till three hours later. Okay? I was livid. My kid could've been that kid in East Point who drowned in the damn pool. Excuse my French. I'm sorry. I was in an accident. I have a brain injury. I want a breakdown of where all our taxpayers' dollars, I pay significant amount of taxes as everybody in this room and every citizen and business owner in this city. I was also told by a few party store owners recently that 4% of liquor sales goes to Mount Clemens schools. I was unaware of that. My next move is calling the state of Michigan. I am livid. You know, it's a shame that we buy homes here in Mount Clemens and we can't even send our children to this school. I have had numerous surgeries, okay? I've laid up in my bed on PBS watching the graduation. It's sad. It is so sad. How is this school still up and running when there's only 200 and some students? How many graduates, how many seniors are in this school enrolled right now? I went on the website, like you explained to me to do, Ms. Beals, and you said I would find a breakdown of these monies, which I've not yet to find. But I'm gonna because I'm on a mission here, okay? This is unfair for our inner-city schools that you have to be a rich suburbanite to get an education. Our children are our future.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Three minutes are up.
Our children are our future. Do better.
My name is Denise Spencer. I live at 1399 Kingsley here in Mount Clemens. I have read Superintendent Bill's statement. I have heard from several board members. I understand and acknowledge that you guys are disgusted and distressed by what has happened. But what I think I need to see is an apology. An apology to the innocent students who have been subjected to this video repeatedly, over and over and over again. over and over and over again. I need to see an apology to the parents, the innocent parents who sent their kids here to school to learn not to see twerking in the gym. An apology to the innocent teachers who come here to do their best every day to make sure our kids get a good education. An apology to the staff members that were here that somehow have now been painted with a very negative brush. An apology to the community for this happening. However it happened, and I know you're investigating, an apology to everyone is going to make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Last call, citizens' comments. Seeing or hearing none, moving the agenda forward. Next on the agenda this evening, item five, Consent Agenda. Under Consent Agenda, A, Approval of Minutes of One, September 21st. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Uh, Ms. McGar- Ms. McGarrett, unmute.
Yes. Okay, I'm Teresa McGarrett, 19 Inches Street in Mount Clemens. I'm also calling with a concern of what occurred on Saturday. However, my concern is this. I am a taxpayer, Mount Clemens High School alumni. I have emails that I sent requesting the rental at King School facility. And I sent the email to K Metter, M-E-T-T-E-R, on July 13th. This was in 2021 for the request of an August 2022 usage. And so, I waited and I waited and I turned in the facility use request. Now, I have copies, the facility use request, within a matter of an hour from the email because she sent it to me, but I had already had it because I got it offline, which by now, for some reason, it's not online anymore. But I have my copy, and I turned it in, right? I got a reply back from Kelly, and it said, "Good afternoon, I have forwarded your request to Paul Shapard." If I'm not saying that right, it's S-A-E-P-P-A-R-D. You can also reach him at 586-43768 regarding building use availability. Thank you, Kelly. So, I contacted Paul, wasn't getting response. Started calling the school, wasn't getting a response. Long story short, afterwards, he responded back and told me, "Mount Clemens School unfortunately does not have enough staff. We can't rent out any facilities." I said, "You don't have it where you could have maybe volunteers or the teachers or staff use some of their time for the weekends." This was for a family reunion, sit-down dinner. No alcohol, not eat and talk afterwards, which is in my request form. He said, "No, because every event, you have to have a custodian. On Saturdays, it's $40, and because your request is a Sunday, it's $50 for a custodian. And then, we have a security event coordinator that's gonna cost you $40. Saturdays is $25." So, I have that copy as well. So, he said, "You have to have at least two because it's the weekend and we don't even have enough staff for one." My question is this. That was for August 2022. Less than two months later, we had what happened on Saturday. Did all of a sudden, Mount Clemens have staff? If so, where were they on Saturday? Who allowed that young lady to come out dressed as she did if it was Mount Clemens staff? Where were they? Were they visible? Because in the paperwork, it also states that they have to be there the whole time, the two, you know, staff individuals. So, I'm really concerned because I'm told one thing, and then all of a sudden, we get an event that was rented. How come the paper wasn't put to say, "Are you still interested in renting?" Because now, we have staff. This young lady came out not dressed appropriately for the event in a school.
Ms. McGarrett, your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom? Mr. Lenninberry?
No one's raising their hand or asking to unmute.
Thank you. Moving the agenda. Action Item, Item Five, Consent Agenda, A. Approval of the Minutes of the One, September 21st, 2022, Regular Meeting. Two, October 13th, 2022, Committee of the Whole Work Session. B, Approval of Bills for Payment. C, New Hires. Chair of the Entertainer Motion, relative chair. Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Seconded by Member Collins. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
Mr. President, I have viewed Item A, One and Two, and all seem to be in a good report.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing seen, none, call a roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. The new hires are Lisa Brooks, second grade Seminole; Tabitha Roundtree, fourth grade Seminole; Jeremy Goodson, secondary special education; Nicolasia Holiday, payroll and grants accounting; Alexis Terry, secondary counselor; Audrey Megan Hayes, art at the secondary complex. Item Six, Personnel Committee. A, Letters of Agreement. One, Insurance Protection. Two, Credit Recovery. And we're gonna pull Items Three and Four under Item Six. Madam Superintendent.
I'd like Mr. Lavender, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, to speak to these, please.
Hello. As discussed at the Board Workshop on October 13th, 2022, a letter of agreement regarding insurance protection was presented regarding changes to the current medical benefits offered to MCEA Employment Group. The changes are proposed as the hard cap went up 1.5% and the cost of benefits went up 9.5%, leaving the increase to fall on the responsibilities of the employees. The letter of agreement includes changing the current choices in ABC Plan's drug card from Saber RX, ABC RX, to three-tier. This change only changes the cost of copays for prescriptions. This does not change the medical plan or services in any way. The members will be able to save premium, which is money in their paycheck, while maintaining their current quality healthcare. The changes in benefit plans will begin January 1st, 2023, and will be available for selection during the open enrollment in November of 2022.
You've heard the recommendation. Chair of the Entertainer Motion regarding the insurance, Letter of Agreement for Insurance Protection.
So, move.
Moved by Member McFadden.
Support.
Seconded, Member Collins. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor?
I am happy to see that this has given a relief to our employees with the deductibles and copays. Much needed.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing seen, none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item Six, A, Two, Credit Recovery. Madam Superintendent.
Mr. Lavender.
As discussed at the October 13th, 2022 Board Workshop, it was presented to add a letter of agreement regarding credit recovery to compensate a staff member through the additional Schedule B-1 to serve as a teacher of record for up to 50 students taking credit recovery at the secondary complex. The cap of students included in this letter of agreement is set at 50. Compensation for this role is set at $2,000 for the year. This letter of agreement will expire at the end of the '22-'23 school year.
Heard the recommendation. Chair of the Entertainer Motion regarding Agenda Item Six, A, Two, Credit Recovery.
So, move.
Moved by Member McFadden.
Support.
Seconded, Member Monk. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing seen, none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item Six, B, Bonuses for Non-Union Employees and Support Staff, EDU Staff, SFE, and ABM. Madam Superintendent.
Mr. Lavender.
At the Board of Education Workshop on October 13th, 2022, information was presented to the Board of Education regarding employee bonuses for non-union exempt employees and third-party employee groups from ABM, SFE, and EDU Staff. After discussions with the Personnel and Financial Subcommittee and with the Board of Education, district administration was directed to bring back a recommendation regarding bonuses for district non-teaching salaried staff and contracted staff from EDU Staff, SFE, and ABM. The Board requested that the administration look at the following: Amount of the bonuses, financial feasibility of the bonuses. We have looked at the bonuses through both of these lenses and recommended the following: Bonuses in the amount of $3,000 to be paid to all district non-teaching salaried staff; bonuses in the amount of $750 be paid to all contracted staff from EDU Staff, SFE, and ABM. We recommend these bonuses are paid out the first pay in November. This pay was chosen to allow the bonuses to be paid prior to Thanksgiving, as mentioned by the Board. The second pay in November occurs after Thanksgiving.
You've heard the recommendation. Chair of the Entertainer Motion relative. Chair of the Entertainer Motion relative to the recommendation.
So, move.
Moved by Member Collins.
Support.
Seconded, Member O'Neil. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lavender, these numbers, is these the same numbers we discussed at the Business Committee meeting?
At the Board Workshop, we talked somewhere between 500 and 1,000. You directed us to go back and take a look at the exact number that we would recommend based on the budget itself, and then to factor in an equitable percentage. And Mr. Melching and I concluded that $750 would be appropriate for the contract.
I'm gonna slide this over real quick for you. Bill, I'm gonna throw it in your court real quick. You're the numbers guy. So, because I know I asked to see how it can make you more favorable, more appealing, better, you take care of personnel, our staff, especially those that are subject to outside sources. So, I know you looked at the numbers. And what calculations? How you got these numbers? Did you use some type of magic formula? Or, I mean, how'd that happen?
I looked at the wage levels and then looked at the bonus levels and saw, looked for the bonus to be in a range of what a percent of salary would be or wage would be if they were an hourly person. And there's a range, so that if they fall in that range, it closes the range by going from 500 to 750 for this percentage.
And you also took into consideration, you know, any additional taxes we need to pay on these bonuses and things of that nature? Okay. And this is the max we could do for them, correct? Because we talked about it at the workshop. I was asked about the number going up or down, whatever. This is just pretty much, we can work with it?
Yes.
In our budget?
Yes.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing seen, none, call a roll, please.
I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
No.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item Seven, Policy Committee. A, Policies for First Reading. One, Policy 0144 dot one, Compensation Revised. Policy 6108, Authorization to Use Electronic Fund Transfers and Automated Clearinghouse Arrangements, New Policy. Three, Policy 6460, Vendor Relations Revised. Policy 6700, Fair Labor Standards Act Revised. Policy 7440 point 03, Small Unmanned Aircraft Systems Revised. Policy 8805, Flags and Display, New. Policy 9150, School Visitors Revised. You wanna take this, you and Mr. Monk, right? Mr. Lavender and Mr. Monk?
Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that we accept for first reading the following policies on the Item Seven, Eight, One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven.
It's been moved by Member Monk to approve the first reading of policies for first reading, Policy One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven.
Support.
Seconded by Commissioner, Member McFadden, excuse me. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
Mr. President, these are the first readings. We will be looking at these at our next policy meeting to bring it back for a second reading and adoption.
So, I rephrase that, that should not be a motion, as the motion is to receive the reading of the first policies as opposed to voting to approve the policies. To receive the first reading of the policies. There was, I talked to you, I had a question. I don't remember which one it was. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor as to receives policies, One through Seven, I ask first readings. Hearing seen, none, call a roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item Eight, Business Committee. A, Audit Report. Madam Superintendent.
I would like to just ask Mr. Melching or Mr. Monk or Mr. McFadden to comment on this. We had a very good audit. Where do you want to head with that?
Bill, go ahead, you got it.
Yeah.
Yes, you have in your packet the audit report. You were given an in-depth report last week at the workshop from the auditors. He, if you remember correctly, called it "A Very Good Audit Report." I'm just gonna give a couple of highlights. First, what I would call audit recommendations, not necessarily findings, but recommendations from the auditors in 630 of '21. The district really had two of those. One of those was referring to the number of journal entries that the district or the auditors had to do after the audit or during the audit fieldwork. That audit finding was removed for 630 of '22. We had one audit finding that was also a carryover from 630 of '21. That had to do with budget controls in the Food Service Fund. It wasn't that it was over budget, but, well, it was over budget, but it was over budget on the revenue side and the expense side. So, they washed each other out, but they were over budget. So, that was a comment in the audit report. I think the most positive thing coming out of the audit report is that for the year ended 630 of '22, the district's general fund and general operating fund of the district finished the year with a $3.187 million surplus. That added to the previous $1.2 million surplus that we finished the prior year with. The district now has a fund balance of $4.4 million, which is about 37 or 38%. That's very healthy. Now, understand, we got to that point because we used Esser's money to fund operations, took our operations money, put that in the fund balance so that we will have dollars to use to do capital improvements that are needed to the buildings that we decide are the buildings that are gonna remain and house our students. So, the Board did talk about at that workshop. So, the Board did talk about at that workshop, maybe possibly in end of the six thirty of twenty-three year, designating some of that fund balance, so it's specifically designated for those capital improvements and doesn't get used for something else. So the Board will make a decision at that point. But a thirty-eight percent fund balance, you know, planning on doing some things to make repairs to our facilities that are gonna house our students in the future is a great thing and moving in the right direction, I believe. Open it up for any questions anybody may have.
So, Bill?
Yes, sir.
So you said we have a healthy fund balance?
We do.
You said thirty-eight percent?
Approximately.
And the ESRS funds that was utilized, we did something legally, put into our operating budget, and utilize other resources to maintain our current situation, correct?
Absolutely. Absolutely allowable.
So, okay.
Use of those ESRS funds.
So we, we, we did something under the ESRS funds that was, that was needed to be done?
Yeah, we used it for operations, to run the daily operations, so we could take our general operating money and put it in the fund balance. So when, and, and we talked about, and we're moving forward with the building appraisal at Seminole to determine what's needed to be repaired and what's needed to be fixed there, and then we use those dollars to make those repairs.
Okay, so we did it in the planning phase. We moved it over to one pot before we planned to see what needs to be fixed?
Correct.
Instead of just using our ESRS funds and just whole willingly just spin it and give it to whoever we're at, correct?
Correct.
All right. Just wanna make sure. It's good news. Thank you.
That is good news, but for, for, for the general public, I would like for them to understand that we have a lot of facility repairs in this school district that needs and should have been done years ago, but have not been done, and those are the things that we are gonna be looking at strongly, because our buildings are in great decay. So, yeah, we have a high fund balance, but think about, we have that money and we, like they said, they moved that ESRS money over, but we have a lot of repairs in our buildings that need to be done. Everybody knows, middle school roof, that's like, probably up to four million dollars right now, if we're gonna go to get that fixed. So, we have a fund balance, but we have capital improvements that we must get done, and those are things that we're gonna be talking about at our retreat.
Very much so, the capital improvements will exceed the amount that we have in fund balance even when we get down to the end of six thirty of twenty-three and that fund balance grows. That's why a building assessment to look at the most pressing needs, the assessment's gonna look at needs in the one to three-year mark, the four to six-year mark, and the seven to ten-year mark, and then we'll start addressing those in the most recurrent, you know, pressing need area.
And also to add on to what Mr. Monk said, using those ESRS funds in this capacity helps us plan ahead because of the supply chain demand. It's gonna take a while for us to get those bids and get the products to fix what we need to get fixed. So putting those money, that money into a safe spot where we can use it down the road, that was a wise choice. So, definitely we gotta do these improvements, because we can't hold off on them. So, once we get the process going, which can be, can be a while, correct?
Correct. Well, we'll get the building assessment done, then the Board will look at what's the pressing, most pressing need, we'll make a decision on what, what needs to move forward on, then you gotta go through the design or, or the bid phase where you come up with bid specifications, you put them on the street, it's bid, and then you go out for bid. That's the process you have to use when it's more than twenty-five thousand dollars per state regulation, so we'll go through that process with every one of them that's more than what we're, you know, more than the threshold we have to for state requirement purposes.
I'm correct, those ESRS funds are supposed to be utilized in certain timelines, is that correct?
Yes, they had to be used by certain timelines, yes.
And doing it this way gives a little bit more time to use those funds, correct?
Gives you as much time as you need to use them, as, as, yes, they'll sit in fund balance.
All right.
Especially if the Board were to take that action a year from now to designate them, set them specifically aside for that purpose.
And but, but from a year from now, we can't make that decision now without finding the resources to find out what we need to get fixed, how much it's gonna cost, who's gonna be the vendor? All right, thank you.
I'd just like to piggyback on, on what both Mr. Monk and Mr. Dr. McFadden are saying. So it's not misconstrued, misinterpreted. You know, some people here, we got four, six, seven million dollar fund balance, thirty-three percent fund balance, and the state wants you to have a minimum of seven percent fund balance, so we, the Mount Clemens way over in the fund balance, but as we stated, we have more needs than we have capital. And by the way that we're doing it, it allows us to take care of some of those needs and still provide the operational revenue that we needed, because we took the general operating fund and put that over into the reserves and use the ESRS dollars to operate. Realistically, ESRS is what keeping this, the doors to this district open right now. So if it weren't for the ESRS dollars that everybody benefit from, a lot of districts, including this one, would be in deep trouble. So, we have to utilize the funds that we have in a manner that best fits the needs for servicing the students in our district. I just wanna make it clear, Mount Clemens, on paper, has a thirty-three percent fund balance, but if we were to utilize the fund balance for the needs that we have, we would have, we'd be in a deficit. So I'll just try to make that clear that, you know, so people don't walk up, hey, got a thirty percent, thirty-three percent fund balance, and what are they doing? It's, it's all the way you, you, you put, you, you put the finances. So, we're, we're doing the best we can to utilize the limit, limited funding that we receive to the best use for educating the students that go into Mount, that attend the Mount Clemens Community School District.
Can I make one other comment?
Yes, sir.
I should have made during my brief report was, we did get a letter, this was, it's not really part of the audit report, but it should be, I think, you know, told here, is we did get a letter from the State of Michigan, Department of Treasury, removing us from the list of districts that are, have financial oversight by the Michigan Department of Treasury. That is because of what we done with improvements in the fund balance and fiscal improvements. I don't know how many years we've been on that. I know, I think Mr. Monk told me it's been every year that he remembers he's been on the Board. So we've been in that situation eight years approximately or more, and now we're out from underneath that, so that's definitely a positive thing, too.
Yes.
You, you, we had the audit report in detail at the work session on Thursday. You heard the overview of this evening. The Chair would entertain a motion to receive the audit report as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Second, Member McFadden. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes, sir.
We are required by the state to have it upload, to have that on our district website, and we will get that up now that the Board has accepted it. We will get it up in the very short near future. So if anybody wants to see the audit report, it will be out there on the website.
Moving the agenda forward, next on the agenda are informational items. Item nine, ninety-eight C, Learning Loss Grant Presentation.
That's what that is, and if you could give these to the other Board members. So the State of Michigan is offering to school districts, there's fifty-two million dollars in grant ninety-eight C, and it will be divided up as an amount per pupil based upon accepted applications, though I don't have an exact amount yet. But the ninety-eight C can be used for many things, and you'll see when I talk about what our learning plan is, what we've done. It can be used to administer high-quality, reliable assessments that can assess student academic progress and assist educators in meeting student needs, including differentiating instruction. Implementing activities, evidence-based activities, to meet the comprehensive needs of students, providing information and assistance to parents and families on ways to support students, tracking student performance and engagement in distance learning. So if you'll take a look at the Learning Loss Plan, this is a plan that, that I did, David was part of some of this plan as well, with the administrators and teachers from secondary and elementary. The very first one is a math interventionist for students in high school math classes. This interventionist is a special education teacher with a degree in mathematics, and he will be working with our students in Algebra One, Geometry, and Algebra Two, with supporting for our special education students, but in addition, he'll be supporting all of the students in that classroom. A Math Essentials class is being offered by one of our staff members. This is a class for seniors. It will be their fourth math credit that students need to graduate, and this is going to be a sixth class offered by a highly qualified teacher, is one of our staff members. So he will be teaching this class, he teaches this class on his prep. The third is an English class. It's a speaking and writing class. It is really a, to add to it, it's a public speaking course, and this course is being offered by our reading interventionist here at secondary, and she works with middle school and high school students to help them in their reading. This will be a sixth class for her in, as well. After-school tutoring. We will be offering after-school tutoring at secondary and at elementary school. Eight teachers at secondary, two times per week per students, and at elementary, two sessions per week. So this was very successful last year. Ms. X and Ms. Hendrickson offered this at Seminole, and they ran this after-school tutoring program four days a week with two different groups of kids. We're gonna use the same model here. The kids at Seminole were there from four to six in the evening, and we provided them dinner and transportation home. We will do that for secondary students as well, but this grant will help pay for that program to be used over at Seminole and here. NWEA MAP Reading Fluency, a program to purchase, so this was particularly important to the elementary principal, and it will help us when you look at, let me go back to my letter here, reliable assessments that can assess student academic progress. MTSS Supplies for Classroom, so these are multi-tiered systems of support, and, and basically what this is, is an organizational tools for the teachers, so that as they begin using some of the different strategies provided by MTSS, that they will have a place to store information, they'll be able to store the strategies, they'll also be able to keep better track of their students, and there's also some professional learning in terms of study teams and books for the staff to use. So what I presented to the staff, to the state, I'm sorry, is adding all of this together, it comes to a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. We'll see how much, when they divide up the fifty-two million, where that all plays out. Any questions?
Did, where, you said all of the wish list items or things that we are trying to get grant approval for, was there a cap of the estimated or guestimated amount of what you could apply to do?
There wasn't, so it's fifty-two million dollars, and it'll be divided amongst the students in Michigan at a per pupil basis, but it's based on the applications, who's applied and what was accepted. So I, I don't have a number.
No, 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 I understand what I'm saying. The reason why I asked is, you know, what we, you said, tell, a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars if we awarded this. Could, is there other stuff that we could have added that, that we need, that we could have potentially added, added to this grant proposal?
You know, Mr. Rickman, there might be. Right now, a hundred and seventeen thousand is, is allowed, when you look at the fifty-two million and you divide it up amongst all the kids in the State of Michigan. So, these were the things that were the most important to the staff members that I spoke to at secondary and at elementary. And it particularly is focusing on math, which is a struggle here at secondary.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments? Informational item ten, Business Committee. A, Financial Reports. Are there any questions regarding the financial reports? B, Contract Listings. Any questions regarding the contracts listings? Seeing and hearing none, takes us to item eleven, Superintendent's Comments. Madam Superintendent.
Well, this week completes our regularly scheduled football and volleyball teams, team season. Our football team is seven and one right now, and so hopefully they'll win on Friday, and that would make us eight and one. We are heading to the playoffs, and if we win Friday, we will be hosting the playoffs. So we're, so we're pretty excited about that. Our volleyball team is ten and three, and their fine, their home game is tomorrow at four thirty, I believe, so it is, the shout-out pink for the girls' game. So please come, show your support for our volleyball girls. They've worked really hard this season. Wear your pink. Our football game is again on Friday at seven thirty. It's our senior night, so it would be great if we could have a support of a really big Mount Clemens support for our kids, just to show support for our kids, for our athletes, and for our schools. Thank you.
That's all you got to report, you stole my thought.
I'm sorry.
Item twelve, Committee Reports. Business and Finance Committee. Any additional information coming out of the Business and Finance Committees? Community Coalition, Mr. Lenninberry.
I do not have a coalition report tonight, but if you don't mind me liaising for a few events that are coming up, we have, this Saturday, the Optimist Club is gonna be moving their trunk and tree to be part of the Spooktacular, so it will not be in the county structure. They'll be along, I believe, the Ross Coplade in Pine Street area, so it's gonna be a bigger event. So they're moving that from the structure over to Spooktacular, which go and run from noon to three. It's gonna be a beautiful day, about seventy degrees, so it should be a beautiful day for the kids to go out in costume and trick-or-treat downtown and have a lot of good time down there. Today is one month from our Santa Claus Parade, one month from today. There's still time to volunteer, still time to give us money, if you wanna sponsor anything at all. We'll take money, right, Tom? We'll gladly take your cash. I'll be downtown on Saturday, signing up volunteers and taking sponsors at the Spooktacular for the parade on Saturday. And what else do we have? There is, was one more thing, I forgot. I'm killing myself now. Oh, we just announced that we're gonna be doing the Jingle, Tinsel Tour again with the Christmas trees downtown. They believe that are seventy-five dollars, they come with a string of lights. I know that the school board is typically sponsored one, the high school, Seminole, the different organizations in the district have sponsored trees. You can decorate them yourself, and they'll be along Main Street or Macomb Place downtown during the holiday. That's always a fun thing to get into as well, so you can apply for the Tinsel Tour at the city website at mountclemens.gov if you guys wanna sponsor a tree, and that will be starting very shortly. I think that's all I got.
Ed Found. Ed Found.
Yes.
Educational Foundation.
Oh, I do not have an education, I'm like, as he's saying, the foundation report, I do not have a report for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Monk, Policy.
Uh, nothing additional to report on a policy.
Thank you, sir. Legislative Committee, the Macomb County School Boards Association have moved their legislative committee to the same night that our workshop, the second Thursday of the month. So I, I won't, I'll, I tend and will choose to attend our work sessions rather than the legislative committee sessions, so hopefully I can get some minutes from those meetings and report out to the Board, 'cause I can no longer go physically to, to those meetings because of our workshops. Takes us to item thirteen, Board Comments. Ms. Collins?
I wanna start my comments by stating, by talking about how fantastic our homecoming game was, and I definitely wanna thank some people. First, I wanna thank Rachel Joseph. Without her, homecoming could have never happened. She put an incredible amount of time and effort, and she did a fantastic job. I wanna thank Tina McNeely and David Lavender for all their support with the different ideas we came up with for the dance and their particip, participation in our parade. Mrs. McNeely for driving her homecoming court in her wonderful convertible. I wanna thank Mr. Lavender for taking a hundred calls and emails and assisting us with our needs as we were pulling the event together rapidly. I wanna thank Dea Bethel for putting together a Seminole student, staff, and parents to walk in our parade with such short notice. It was a huge success, and each Seminole student that walked was chosen by their teachers for being scholarly students. It was a huge success, and each Seminole student that walked was chosen by their teachers for being scholarly students at Seminole. I would like to take, thank our parent volunteers, specifically Lori Spooner and the Wallaces, and our support staff for assisting us in setting up the stadium and dance. A special thank you to Pastor Larry Ireland for all of his help with the float. And John Klein, a local resident and Optimist Club member, who not only made our float secure and safe, because it was not, but he was also happy to haul it in our parade, which I think our residents were happy to see come through town. I would like to thank Jason Monk and David Feminineal for their generous donations to our homecoming fund. A special thank you to Kathy Butler, owner of Zodiac Entertainment, for stepping up and DJing our dance and sending a fantastic DJ at the last minute. It was very much appreciated. I'd also like to thank Deanna for decorating our school. It looked absolutely incredible. I have videos, if you are on my Facebook, you will see them. I will share them to our communicate page because it did come out absolutely beautiful. If I missed anyone, I'm sorry, but I am looking forward to homecoming already for next year and planning early. In regards to the events that took place on Saturday in our gymnasium, they were a shock to me. As a trustee who represents this board, I am truly saddened to see and hear the inappropriate behavior that occurred that evening. My understanding was a charitable event would occur onsite, and I felt blindsided knowing of all the disturbing actions that occurred that day. I encourage and support local charitable events. But what occurred here on Saturday is not something I condone, encourage, appreciate on our community property, nor is it what we represent. This event took place in our facility, that took place in our facility, has been a disruption to our students' education, to our teachers and support staff who work incredibly hard to provide a safe learning environment to our students every day. The conduct of this event is a disruption to their daily work and only makes their job harder. I'm very sorry to our community and our students that this happened. And I will be committed towards bettering our protocols, processes, and procedures to ensure situations like this do not ever happen again. I fully support the ban of Rivals recruiting worldwide from our facilities. I would request that we add OT-Row to that list. The situation is under further investigation with administration and local authorities. And I will support any appropriate forms of accountability within our staff and administration and/or possibility of charges that may arise from the actions that took place. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Mrs. O'Neill.
I do want to thank everybody that had a hand in the homecoming, the homecoming gang, the homecoming dance. It was absolutely gorgeous. And I heard that the kids had a wonderful time. I wish I could have been here to help out, but of course, my schedule would not allow me to do that. And I also want to say I'm sorry for the event that happened Saturday. Just, the only thing that we can say is, we're sorry. It happened. It's unfortunate that it happened. I think from the beginning, there was some trust with some people that came forth to ask to rent the facility. Had the individuals know that it was going to happen, absolutely not. We would not have rented the facility to any of them. So I do appreciate the fact that the group was banned from the facility and can no longer rent the facility. And I appreciate you all coming out. And I know that we are all taxpayers. And I would love to see this kind of turn out for something positive. For, have these taxpayers come out for something positive. Again, I am sorry, and I know there are individuals on Facebook and different social media that want to see the district fail. And I just ask that you all do come out and support us in future events and things that go on because the students need us and the teachers need us. There are some phenomenal teachers in this district. And are very well-educated to educate our students. And I just want to, again, apologize for the event and let you all know that we are looking forward to you all coming out for more positive events. I'll see you all at the next meeting. That's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill. Mr. Monk.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the football team on homecoming. I actually worked the chain game for the first time ever in my life.
Man.
It was a little cold out there, but I had, if anybody know me, I'm a golfer, so I had my golf hat on, had my gloves on. I was warm, but it was exciting just being out there because as a former football coach, you know, seeing the coaches just interact with the players on the side. And almost got tackled a couple of times. I had to drop my flag thing, but it was great. And, you know, our football team did one hell of a job coming back in those close times that they did. So congratulations to them. Also, being a former volleyball coach here, I want to congratulate the volleyball team for their great season also. And, girls, keep it up. Hopefully, you know, I can get out to some couple of games and definitely make the playoffs. You know, I want to just, I really want to apologize to everyone here. And everybody on the camera. And I'll keep apologizing to everybody if I meet you in Walmart, Myers, at the grocery store, at the gas station. What happened shouldn't have happened. And with that, I'm going to read a statement. The events of this past weekend were really hard for me to accept. This does not represent our mission for our school district. For someone to think that it's okay to bring this type of event to a public school is very difficult for me to comprehend. I called the Board President immediately to discuss action needed from the Policy Committee, and that's the committee that I chair. And in the spirit of transparency, this is what the Policy Committee will perform. We have the policies already in place for renting our facilities when they are followed correctly. We will meet to review and make any needed changes to ensure this never happens again in the future. And with that, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion. I would like to move that we pause any and all future rentals for our properties for the next 90 days to allow the Policy Committee to review and/or bring any improvements to the full board for Policy 7510, Use of School Facilities for Adoption.
It's been moved by Mr. Monk to freeze, is that, you didn't use the word freeze, you said pause.
Yes.
Any usage, facility use, pause any facility usage until such time that the Policy Committee can come up with recommendations or changes, amendments to bring to the board.
Yes, for Policy 7510, Use of School Facilities.
I support.
Second, Member McFadden, are there any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
I have a question.
Yes.
Generally, with athletic banquets that does require facility use, we had to fill it out for basketball. So do we have anything planned currently that our students will be using?
No, any future, I said pause any future.
Something's already in place.
And something's already in place is in place, but anything future will pause.
Okay, but have we given them the opportunity to put it in place? Because I don't want to see our kids' banquets and things like that be taken away because of this.
Okay, let me, I'll rephrase.
Okay.
Can I rephrase that?
Yeah, amend it.
Rem, okay, I'll amend that. I would like to move to pause any outside events or outside entities and all future rentals for our properties for the next 90 days.
I'm taking you, this, we'd have to, you already had a motion on the floor. Now, we are, are you, you're moving to amending the motion.
Yeah, I amend that motion.
Okay, okay. And your amendment is, for clarity?
For all outside entities wanting to rent our facilities.
Okay, Mr. Monk has put an amendment to the motion on the floor to include the words outside entities. Outside entities to the original motion that was on the floor.
Hey, I moved to support, that way opens up the discussion. Support.
Member McFadden has seconded the amendment. And the amendment is to include the wording outside entities for building usage.
Will that include our churches?
They're already in existence.
Yeah, those are already in existence, those are already upon, those are personal.
These too, and not individuals.
Right.
Use form that's filled out each time, we actually have a lease with those two organizations.
Do they have anything set for events? I mean, I think it's something that we have to look at. I agree with it, but I'd like to see what we already have in place and what is needed with the organizations that are, the good organizations that have been doing great things in this community. I just want to ensure we're not excluding anyone.
Yeah, that doesn't affect the two churches that rent our facilities.
Church does often have a New Year, or a Christmas Eve service that would fall in the 90 days.
Christmas Eve, that falls outside the 90 days.
So it would be just for individuals if they want to come and rent the, so we're just pausing that? Not those that already have something in place? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Monk, let's just make this easy. Let's move it to 45 days. And if we can make a motion for a special meeting or something, we discuss this policy and go from there. But we need to put something in position before we get a hold of this.
That's what I'm saying, I want to get, I want to halt anything going forward. So I'll adjust it to 45 days if we need to. I don't think the motion.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Your original motion had 90 days. The amendment is outside entities, and that includes the 90 days. You wanting to amend the amendment to put it 45 days is what I hear.
No, no, I'm not amending it yet, I'm just having a discussion.
Oh, okay, okay.
Breaking the discussion.
Okay. Well, you said to make it easier, let's put 45, 45, okay, all right, okay.
No, no, no motion.
I'm just trying to keep it, keep it straight.
Move for discussion.
Yeah, okay.
Would it be easier if we go 45 days? And from there, we can bet and see what's going on, and then go from there. That's where the Policy Committee can get together and put something together.
We can do that.
Okay, and I'm only doing that, not playing devil's advocate, because I know we got all these other working factors going on with churches and whoever.
But the churches are on leases.
I understand.
That really doesn't affect it.
I see you eye to eye, Mr. Monk, but just play devil's advocate.
So we will include our churches as within the building? So it's the same way we would treat our students, athletes, and things that they want to do within the building? We'll treat our churches here the same way?
I didn't say that. And I'm not trying to play a pun with devil's advocate church, but I'm not saying it to treat them the same.
I think we're making this way too difficult.
Yeah, we're making it too hard on what it needs to be.
Okay, we're still dealing with the amendment. And the amendment is to add to the original motion, outside entities.
Ms. Collins, what is your recommendation?
I just, can we do this in 30 days? I mean, can we, Mr. Monk, it's me and you. Can we meet within 30 days and have true review?
It's me, you, Ms. Mills.
I know.
It's a whole policy team.
Well, it's not the whole board, though. So there's less people that have to come together to do this. Is it, can we do this in 30 days? I don't want to take away holiday events and things like that to people that have been loyal to us and good to us.
Any school event takes precedence over any outside entity, period. That doesn't affect any school event. School event are for our kids. That's what I'm about. I'm not talking about taking anything away from these kids. So whatever these kids, and it's inside, in the building, in the district, it doesn't affect that. What I'm trying to do is that I'm trying to put a pause on this situation so we can relook Policy 7510 and the four AGs that goes along with it to make sure that we are interpreting them and we are executing them correctly so that doesn't happen again.
And I agree. Now, can you help me understand, and I would hate to have to direct this to Paul Shepard, but does the Mount Clemens Optimist Club use a facility use form to conduct their meetings? So how do we do this appropriately?
That's for kids, that's for the kids.
But it's an outside organization, you're saying outside organization?
But they, that's already, they have that currently in place already.
I just don't see the need for 90. I think we need to move and we need to discuss it and get it done.
What would you be comfortable with?
30 days.
Less than 30 days, we'll make it happen.
That's an amendment to the amendment. It's the same thing, days 45. You know, unless it's just discussion 30 days, we got to have a motion because your original motion stated 90 days. So in order to change that, it has to be moved and approved, and then we keep moving forward, so.
I will amend the amendment to the amendment to reflect 30 days.
Been moved by Member Monk to amend the amendment to 30 days. Is there a second?
Court.
Second, any discussion on the amendment to the amendment? And the amendment to the amendment is 30 days. Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes. Motion carries. Now we're back to the amendment, which states, to the original motion, outside entities, and replacing 90 days, the 90-day pause to 30 days. So the amendment is now outside entities and 30 days.
Yes.
Any questions, comments on the amended amendment? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes. The amendment carries. Now, the main motion as amended, as amended. Any questions, comments, discussion on the floor, which is now the main amendment to outside entities, pause for 30, now pause for 30 days? Any questions, comments, concerns on the new main motion? Yeah, I'd like to comment. We're talking about make it easy. The easiest route is to implement, is to utilize and implement our current policy. The policy is in place. I will support whatever the board does. But if we follow the policy, then we wouldn't have to be dealing with 30 days outside entity because the policy addresses all areas of usage, from those usage from internal, usage that are for students, usage for outside of the school district entities that support and bring resources to our students. And it even talks about how we utilize. And it even talks about how we utilize for-profit entities utilizing our buildings. Again, I will support whatever the board goes for, but I don't think that we need to amend it. All we need to do is follow it, because if we would have followed the policy, we wouldn't be in this predicament. So, those are my comments. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the main motion, that is to pause on outside entities, usage of the building for 30 days? No questions, no comments, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
No, motion carries.
Those are my board comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Dr. McFadden?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, first of all, I want to thank the community, I do. It's good to see the community come out to participate, voice your opinions, your thoughts, your concerns, your emotions, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Um, I wish we could have these type of conversations on the better terms, but according to what happened, that's not the case. But what did come about this conversation was not only what happened this weekend, but it also brought out all your feelings about everything you think about is wrong or right with the district. And that's something we've been looking and searching for, for a very long time. So I do appreciate the fact that you came out and you told us not only about this weekend, but everything else that you felt was wrong and incorrect. Being on the board is not easy, we have to make a decision, and you only make the decision because of what's around you, because we don't get to see outside our bubble. So when people outside our bubble comes in and let us know what they see on outside, it helps a lot, and I appreciate that. Um, I thought about preparing a statement tonight, but I can prepare anything, but how can you prepare for something like this? So I will speak from my heart. What happened this weekend is not something that we intentionally to do or done to deface the district or to insult you, to embarrass you, to ridicule you, and anything else that's negative or a word that you use negative to identify someone in the community. So yes, we do, and we are very apologetic and sorry of what happened. We didn't force it, we didn't cause it. I woke up Sunday morning, and just like you, I was shocked. I did not know, just as well as most of you did not also, until you watch, um, Facebook, the news, whatever. Um, but we do rent our facilities out, we do vet and try to find the right person, the right fit. We don't try to rent our facilities out to somebody that's going to insult our district. Most of us sit on this board, it's because we love our district. We're not trying to find something to burn it down, to tear it down, or to give it away. We look at financial responsibility when it comes to our buildings. We don't think, or we don't just wake up one day and say, hey, you know what, let's tear a building down, let's sell a building, let's close a building, let's move these children here or there. We try to do what's financially and fiscal responsible. I heard the comments about King School. King School was running at one-fourth capacity. Now, if you're a taxpayer and you have a big room in a house, and you only sleep in one room, all your children move out the house, five-bedroom house, and it's just you and your husband, it kind of makes sense to relocate those children or that family to another piece of the house. I mean, it just makes sense. So, I heard a lot of comments about our financial responsibility with ESRA funds. And our ESRA funds, I believe, was used correctly and appropriately. We didn't give it away to any entities that want to use the facilities. We had a lot of people who wanted to give our ESRA funds to them for they can resource their playgrounds. We did not do that. So I say that because as a board member, I, I know for sure, take this job serious. Now, to the right, to the bright, bright side of things. All this happened this weekend, but what people failed to realize, because of all this ugliness, our football team went seven and one. Long time since that happened. And as much as people come out to throw rocks, and that's fine, I expect rocks to be thrown. You should. But I also expect people to come out and support and throw cheers for our boys on the football field. Also expect people to come out and support our girls. In 2019, the volleyball team, I believe, went 0-15. The year before that, 0-15. This year, the volleyball team is 10-3. That speaks values by itself by actions. Some people say that we fail the board or don't move forward to make actions to make things or make changes. Some people believe that teacher migration is reflection of a bad district. But as you know, the things that happen in the state of Michigan, to be a teacher is a commodity. Everybody wants to teach. Science, math, history, social studies, English is a high-value job. The best thing you can be is a teacher. And I do not put any teacher that we had in this district in the past, present, or future under the bus. I would not do that. They got to feed their children, they got to take care of their household. If another district down the street is going to offer them $25,000 more than what we offer them, I give them support to go ahead and go after it. Because just as soon as, and, and the good thing about that, they're getting an experienced teacher that has resources and been in the district with such problems that we have, they're going to be a great addition to another district. But what that opens the door for us is a young teacher to come in and made, make another impact in our district. So once again, I speak from the heart. What happened? Unacceptable, absolutely. There's no questions about it, there's no, there's not as many times you can say sorry. But I do know this, the investigation will take place, and when the findings come forward, we as a board, either in an executive session or in a public meeting, will take action. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. On behalf of the members of the Mount Clemens Board of Education, faculty, and staff, as the president of this board, I apologize for the activity that happened on Saturday evening. It was unacceptable, disgusting, I could say a lot of things, but no one on this board, staff, support staff, at any time voted to support the activity of Saturday evening. There's many things that I could say, but I won't, but we didn't, we did not condone nor support the type of activities that transpired on Saturday. Three words come to my mind when I'm thinking about the advents of Saturday's activities that brought people out to this meeting. Not only the, it hit local, I have received texts, emails, calls from people all across this country. I had the opportunity to serve as the president of the National School Boards Association, and I met hundreds, thousands of school board members. And everywhere I went, I put the name Mount Clemens, Michigan out. And a lot of, there's not a lot of Mount Clemens, uh, in this country. And I had people from Utah and Idaho that I met back in 2010, 2011, that asked me, is this your school district, or is this a school district in your city? It was embarrassing. The three words that come to my mind, image, reputation, and perception. Our image was tampered, tampered with, our reputation was tampered with, and the perception of what goes on in the Mount Clemens Community School District was truly, truly something that is going to be hard to recover from. This too shall pass, but the image, the reputation, and the perception, those things have been I would like to congratulate the girls' volleyball team for a successful season. If they don't win another match, they have had a very successful season. So congratulations, uh, to the Lady Bather's volleyball team. Tomorrow night is their last home game. Uh, it's a pink-out, it's senior night. Hopefully, we'll see a crowd. The boys' football team started off with a loss. I wasn't announcing that night, so, yeah. They have since then went on to have a seven-game winning streak. Uh, they are seven and one, they have qualified for the playoffs. Their last regular season home game will be here at Bucko Stadium at 7:00 PM. It will be senior night. I think there are five seniors, six seniors, that will be playing their last regular home game, uh, here at Mount Clemens High School. Uh, we wish them well, we wish them best of luck, uh, and we hope to see you. It's not supposed to be as cold this Friday as it was last Friday, uh, so the weather should not be an impediment. And as my colleague, Dr. McFadden said, and other colleagues stated about, we're, we're glad to see you, but we're saddened to see you come, uh, because of this type of activity. Many of you are alumnus, uh, that are here, and once a bather, always a bather, and we appreciate the support. And again, we can only apologize, uh, investigation is ongoing, so I won't get into the particulars of, of anything, um, not to disrupt, uh, any process, any part of the investigation process. If you have information, uh, relative to the activities that happened Saturday, uh, we would wish that you would contact, um, somebody in administration, or I don't know what detective is leading the, um, um, the investigation on behalf of.
Anderman.
Adelman?
Anderman.
Scott Anderman?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, you can, um, contact, um, Deputy Scott Anderman, uh, Macombe County Sheriff Department. Those are my comments. The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I've got one more comment, if you don't mind.
I'm all right, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I said earlier that people came out and they gave all the problems. I asked.
Come on, man, we don't get.
No, just one more time, I'm done, I'm done. Any problems y'all find, please let us know about it, because we don't know if you don't tell us. So that's all I ask. I'm done. I move for adjournment. Give support.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at 8:15. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.